Okay, we're live. Thank you everyone for joining us in city council chambers tonight in Spanish Fork City. We appreciate all of you joining us in person and online wherever you're at. Would like to excuse Councilman Marshall tonight. He is at family, well-deserved family vacation. And same with city manager Seth Perrins is on vacation as well. So we'll miss them tonight, but we'll catch up with them next time. We're going to start our meeting tonight like we always do in Spanish Fork with a prayer or motivational message and then the pledge of allegiance. I think Councilman Took was going to give us the prayer and then Councilman Carden will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Okay. Our dear Father in heaven, we're grateful to be gathered this evening. We're grateful for this opportunity we have to gather and learn from each other and please help us to be better public servants. We're thankful for this amazing city and please help us to continue to make decisions so that it will continue to improve. We're thankful for our freedoms and please help us, especially those who are grieving at this time, to help us to groove together and to find happiness and support each other with love. We love you, Father. We need thy help and assistance and pray for thy guidance in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Will the audience please arise and say the pledge with me?
The pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have our Spanish Fork 101 graduates with us tonight. This is, I'm starting to lose count of the class. Mr. Nick, six? Number six?
Five.
Okay. So I'd like to turn the time over to Nick Porter that will welcome the graduates here tonight and have a little something for them.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, graduates, if you'd come on up from our most recent class. We just finished our sixth Spanish Fork University 101 class. We now have over 100 graduates of that program, which is pretty amazing, just in those three short years. So for those that don't know what that is, it's a 10-week course that any residents invited to take to really learn pretty broadly, but also pretty deep what the city is, what each department does, and kind of how it all works. So this group standing behind me, they've been with us. They did the 10 weeks. And last week, we gave all of them a diploma that the mayor suggested you all put, you know, next to your other degrees. And I have yours, Matt, since we missed you last week. So I just wanted to recognize them in this meeting for their sacrifice and their time in, you know, putting, giving up 11 weeks Thursday nights to learn more and to be engaged in the community and grateful for them and also all the staff and time that they took to prepare this. So I'll give you each a class photo. We'll take a picture. But if any of you want to say, I know you had some words at graduation. Do you want to say something now? Surprise. Okay. And then we'll make Matt come over because he got off the hook last time.
Tell Tara your name so she gets it on the record here for everyone in the world.
Yeah, I'm Caitlin McLean.
Thank you.
One of the graduates. And yeah, I guess just to kind of recap what I said last week, I think it was an awesome program. And signing up for it, I mean, I was excited, but I was kind of wondering if it was just going to be like 11 weeks of just an hour lecture sitting in like a room like this. But all of the different departments and members of the departments put a lot of effort into making every week fun and engaging. And I feel like I walked away with a huge appreciation and greater understanding of what all the different departments of the city do for us. So I just feel like it really represented our motto here in Spanish Fork of pride and progress. And yeah, I've been recommending it to like everyone that I know in Spanish Fork City or just like telling people like, you gotta get something like this started in Springville or Provo because I think it's a great way to just spread awareness of what you guys do in our different departments and, you know, get someone to, like, I think the Stormwater Department put it, but someone, excuse me, put more people in the city to kind of root for them and speak for them on their behalf when we're deciding on how to use our tax dollars to make Spanish Fork even better. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor and council, thanks for allowing us to be here for a little bit. It's much better being here than where we sat in your chairs a few weeks ago, kind of learning more about what you do. But I'm appreciative and grateful for the opportunity we had to come learn. And as was mentioned, it just helps, I think, make, helps people to make better decisions when they know more. It's easy to just get on social media and criticize or, you know, make suggestions or things like that. And which is, you know, everyone's entitled to, obviously, but it helps us make better decisions. I think when we know more, I certainly learned a lot more about different departments and things that, how they contribute economically to our community. Above all, even the airport, I think, really surprised me. I had no idea the level of contribution it makes. But yet, it makes me proud to live here as well and see the different things that go into various aspects of our lives and forward-thinking that the city has been in contributing to different departments. So again, thank you. Learned a lot. And again, I think it's a great opportunity for people. So please keep it up. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Sorry, Matt Hargraves.
Sorry about that.
All right, we'll get one picture with these guys and then...
Sounds good.
We'll continue.
Congratulations, Chris.
Let's all shift this way just a little bit. All right. One, two, three. Okay. Thank you.
Give him a round of applause.
Thank you.
I think we have a couple SF 101 graduates, don't we?
Absolutely. First class.
Yes. Yes. What class? Class of, class of one. Wow.
You both were, huh?
Okay.
Anything you guys would like to say to these grads? Oh, Kevin?
I was there as well. Yeah, I kind of hit him in the back.
Your dad was the city manager. You were a graduate of 101 when you were three, I think.
Learned a few things.
Okay. Anything you guys would like to say to the graduates that you haven't already said?
Be involved. Just stay involved as much as you can and find ways to continue to be a part of our community. And if you see something, we don't, we don't all have the ideas. We don't all have, you know, the hold of the city. If our community, if you especially as graduates, see something or have ideas, share them, please. So that's the only advice I would give.
Just quickly, this class is amazing. And you new graduates, recent graduates, know that. So as a couple of you have expressed, continue to spread the word. Share with other residents who you think might be good fits for the next cohort. And we just had the largest cohort with yours. And let's just continue to grow the program so we continue to educate more and more of our amazing residents and get on the same page.
Volunteers are what make the city go. And so finding those places that you want to serve in are such an awesome way to give back. So keep it up.
The only thing I'll correct Nick with saying is I never say, put it next to your diploma. I'd say, take down whatever diploma you have on the wall and put this one up. No, it's a, it's a great course that I've seen some other cities start to adopt. And it's a credit to Nick. It's a credit to the city administration and the city council for supporting it. And all of you taking time out of your busy schedules, away from work, away from your families, and learn, learn some things. So, so thank you. Thank you for putting in that effort. And like I told you the other night, you're, you're on a list. So please, please say, sign me up when we, when we shoot you a phone call or a message. And there's a lot of places to help lift in the community and we'll be calling on you. So thank you. Thank you again. Okay, there's nothing else. Takes us to item number five for tonight, the public comment section of our meeting. We always have a public comment section. I know that there's more than a few people here that might be here for some specific comments to the public tonight. This is, this is your time to address the city, the mayor and council, like what's already been said when we asked the 101 graduates. Please make sure to state your name so Tara can, can get that in the minutes. Our public comment section, we always have Nick put up a three-minute timer. Let me know if you, if you need a little bit of longer time. I'll try to respectfully just let you know when, when three minutes goes like this. But, but let me know if you need some time. We, we're aware of what maybe some of you are here to speak to us about. I do want to, before, before public comment here, just give a little bit of, of news, if you will. I've said, said it many times before and said it recently as well, that Spanish Fork is a small community. We're not maybe small in population anymore with 45,000 plus. We are a small and tight-knit community. And the tragedy that happened last Saturday confirms, confirms that to me, reconfirms that to me. So from, from me to you as the citizens, as neighbors, as congregation members, I want to let you know that speaking with the families of Olivia and Reagan directly, they are seeing every ounce of love and support that you've given them. And that, that is what makes our community great. It is what makes us still feel small. And I'll tell you, speaking with, speaking with the Lady Dons yesterday, last night before they were taken to fill today, and it's kind of become a custom that, that they say, hey, come, come speak some words of encouragement to these young ladies as they try to finish off a softball season. I asked their coach if, if they would be okay to send messages of encouragement to, to a couple of girls in our community. And again, to see teenage girls through tears, write messages of, of love and support to two girls that they don't, they don't know, they only know them because they call the same city home, sure speaks to me of what this community is about. And so again, they've seen your love. They've seen your prayers. They've felt, they've felt every single one of those. And while they're still hoping for miracles and fighting, literally fighting for, for their lives, they feel, they feel your love. And so from, from the mayor that's, and the council that's lucky enough to represent this community, I want to let you know that. I want to let you know personally that, that they have said that. Please ask your, your questions and your comments. We're not going to pretend to have answers to, to everything. We are going to research and process, and I've assured them as well, everything that we can, we can possibly do. And we have some specific updates that, that after, you know, after questions, after comments, that I've asked Chris to kind of give us an update of, of some of those, some of those as recently as today, of movement and coordination with the right authorities for this section of town. But again, thank you. Thank you for coming tonight. But thank you for your love to, to fellow members of your community. It's, it's not lost on me. You're an inspiration to me. And I assure you, it's not lost on these sweet girls and their families. Yes, thank you.
Hi Tara. My name is Kyle James. I go by Bryce. So I'm here about the intersection, 2300 East and Canyon Road. I'm sure you guys are not going to hear from only me today. I've heard you guys have been working on this for a very long time. Progress is ridiculously slow. I've personally talked to many of you about this intersection before, and some of those conversations happened over a year ago. The residents of Spanish Fork have been getting promise after promise on how long this is going to take. And they all lay unfulfilled still. I have now personally, I live five houses away from the intersection. I have now personally been the, one of the first people with arrived at three accidents, two of which involve children. And this last one, I'll probably never get able to get it out of my mind. And nobody that does their will. It was one of the most horrific things I have ever seen in my life. I understand that UDOT owns the road. I get that. But I believe the road between the intersection and the roundabout to the north should have never been opened without the light in place. Adding that fourth direction of traffic exponentially increased the danger of this intersection. And the liability for that lies fully on the city council and the planning committee. This is where our pride and progress has failed the citizens of Spanish Fork. We have pushed too far, too fast, and have let safety go to the wayside. I'm here to ask that the city close the road immediately from the roundabout to Canyon Road until the light can be installed. We can all spend an extra minute to go around the, the intersection over to Walmart. It's not going to hurt anybody. We did it just fine for years. I am frustrated that some of the Otis for this accident was put upon the parents by members of the council. Encouraging parents to send their, their children down to the other intersection makes it sound like these parents did a bad job raising their children who now sit in the hospital. That's all I've got to say today. Thank you.
Bryce. Great.
Hi, my name is Christopher Carroll. I live in the Maple Meadows section of Spanish Fork. Mayor and council members, I just wanted to express my gratitude to you for serving on, in the roles that you do. I know you all have full-time jobs and you take time away from your families for the community. And I want to express my thanks for that. I also want to express my thanks to the men and women of Spanish Fork Police, Fire, and EMS for the outstanding job that, that they did. I came tonight to also comment on the pedestrian auto accident that occurred at Canyon Road in 2300 East. I was present at the accident scene when these two girls were struck and critically injured. This tragedy, in my opinion, was very foreseeable and preventable. We have grown really fast here in Spanish Fork. We have a perfect danger situation there where we have the attraction of the soda shop, the pizza shop, the small mart, everybody, and, you know, and the neighborhood is full of a thousand young kids. They all are trying to cross Canyon Road to get to those attractions that we, that we built and that we, you know, built the houses in the neighborhood. And we didn't provide that, that protection of a light and a crosswalk there. That, to me, is a failure. I think we failed as a community. And I, I just really came here tonight to just implore you to do anything you can to expedite the installation of safety measures, crosswalk, a light there at that intersection, and also to take any temporary measures that might be available to create a crosswalk there with lights or something. Mayor Menon Hall, I read your statement that you put out, and I wholeheartedly agree that the safest place to cross right now is, is down at the other light. I measured it. It's, it's over 530 yards down the road. I don't think it's reasonable to expect teens and tweens and elementary school kids to walk five football fields out of their way to get to the fun. They're just not known for their keen sense of judgment at that age. And I'm sure you all know that. I thank you for the update that you're going to provide tonight. And I just wanted to offer my, my best wishes to the family and to the council in trying to solve this problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you for being on site.
My name is Peyton Laureen. I'm speaking on behalf of my wife Alexis in regards to our citizen safety on the roads and the concern of whether we have leadership in place that's in tune with the needs of our community. My wife's sister is Reagan, and Olivia, her best friend, lives in my ward. These were the girls involved in Saturday's accident. And I'm sad it takes an accident of this magnitude to get people to try to put change together. I'm concerned, not only as someone personally involved, but as a father of four young kids who live within 30 seconds of that intersection. I drive this intersection multiple times a day, and I don't know how many accidents I've seen, how many near pedestrian misses I hear about, how many complaints I see go towards the city that fall on deaf ears. We tried to walk across the road last week just to go to Walmart. It was the scariest thing I've done in my life. I understand this road is owned by UDOT and they maintain it. My grandfather was Brent Hanson, a former mayor of Spanish Fork. And I learned quite a bit about what goes on in local government. I have a pretty good idea of how things work. But I know 2300 East is zoned and maintained by Spanish Fork. This area has been made for pedestrian crossing. There is a walking trail there, countless crossing paths across the roundabout that go to Walmart. Now, I understand you don't have control of the actual city or the actual street. Where was this planning two or three years ago when this was made? Now, not all of you may have been here when that happened, but this study should have been done years ago. That should be something that goes open before you open something up. I'm a project manager. I can't just have a project go and just not do my job and just push it through. Again, where was this two years ago? I know there was a recent study in the past few months, but again, that should have been done in the past. How was there no planning with UDOT recently? Part of my job is dealing with government agencies and entities on the daily. I know there's tons of red tape and hoops you have to jump through. But you can push, you're a city. You can get temporary permits. Again, all fell on deaf ears. I want to know, you know, how out of touch are we? Why are we not pushing for change? If this accident didn't happen, it would happen another time. It was a ticking time bomb. Spanish Fork's the city of pride and progress, and I see progress in some areas, but I feel a lack of pride in a lot of them. Well, growing city is fantastic. Direct center is a great option. These things don't matter in the end of the day if we can't keep our city safe and sustain this level of growth. Adding a roundabout here, a miniature roundabout here, and making sure that you're posting at the different events you are at and talking about how important it is to go to Fiesta Days does not matter. Your constituents, your city wants to see the work you're actually doing, not the good parts about what you're doing. We don't care about that. So if you're going to sit and plan for Fiesta Days for months and years and just want to be seen there, I don't know why you're here. There are many other roads and intersections that need to be fixed as well. In closing, progress doesn't mean anything if we can't sustain this growth and actually push for safety that needs to make our city better. Trying to play hero by going up and giving a softball when these girls don't play softball and could care less, and if they were conscious, would have thrown that softball out the window. And then try to play hero saying you're getting a crosswalk. How out of touch are we? That's the last thing these parents want to hear. Needless to say, none of you have my vote now. And as at least some of you know, my family knows about everybody in Spanish Fork. And if this is more about wallets and a vote for next year, but cutting these corners, you're not going to get another vote. I always said Spanish Fork was the greatest city on, in the world. But these days, it most definitely does not feel that way.
My name is Paul Dayton. I live very, very close to this intersection. I've literally crossed it on foot hundreds of times. And it is, it is a dangerous intersection, but I kind of want to take a step back and just say some other things I've seen because I've, I've ran every single street in this town. And one thing that frustrates me is when we build roads, we build them and consider them complete without completing pedestrian infrastructure. I think we have to have a philosophy that pedestrian infrastructure, pedestrian infrastructure, be that trails, sidewalks, crosswalks, is critical to, to an actual construction of a road. A road is not done unless the pedestrian infrastructure is done. Obviously, a lot of comments here on 2300 East, but I want to bring up another one that I see all the time. Spanish Fork Parkway, very grateful that, that exists as an alternative to get downtown, to get down to all of the businesses. But ever since the high school opened shortly after I moved in in 2007, I've noticed that high school kids are walking along this road and have essentially worn a trail, a parallel to Spanish Fork Parkway from the church up to the high school. There's people who live in the community near there who walk to school. We have to assume that not everybody is driving. The city's built as if everybody's driving. I get it. Everybody likes to drive. I have three F-150s, five cars. We have more cars in my household than we have people in my household. But that said, it's important that we understand that in order for this to be totally safe, we need to make sure that pedestrians are there. And it's not just children. Some people can't drive. Some people choose not to drive. I mean, we could all do a little better if we do a bit more walking as well. But that said, the comment I'd want to make is that we should be absolutely sure that, that we pull out all the stops. I get that a lot of construction that happens in terms of infrastructure is paid for by developers. Canyon Road is not in some place that's... Canyon Road is not in some place that's undeveloped. Canyon Road's very much in the center of town. I went and walked and actually flew my drone around there and took a look at things and I've noticed this quite a bit. On Canyon Road, on the north side of Canyon Road, we've got a bunch of places where there's some sidewalk, some trail, and then there's not and it's inconsistent. With all the kids who are around there and especially going towards parks, they're going to say, should I cross here? Should I not? Oh, my gosh, I'm halfway to the All Abilities Park. Should I go all the way back to where there's a light? Am I trespassing by walking through this field? I think the thing that we fundamentally need to ask ourselves is when we're building critical infrastructure like schools and parks, we should make sure that the ways to get there are easy and accessible for children and for others and the citizens, other citizens as well. I appreciate the work you've done. I generally come up here and praise you for the good work here and I still think there's a lot of great things here in Spanish Fork. I voted for a lot of you, probably will continue to do that, but we can do better. And I think, I'll make one last comment. North on Spanish Fork Parkway, north of 400 North, there's an area that is undeveloped but has a trail along it. I just went on that yesterday. I don't know what the history was of what happened for why that trail was developed when the rest of the land wasn't. But that said, at least it tells me that there are some places where we have undeveloped property that has improved pedestrian access. If there's ways that we can get around that, ways that we can, you know, talk to the legislature, talk to other things, push things, move heaven and earth. I know there's lots of fancy things that we can do in the city even that might not work with the existing sort of structures that are in place. I'd implore you to do things like that, make sure pedestrians are safe. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Paul.
My name is Michelle Mills. Hello, mayor and councilman. My husband and I have raised most of our five children here in Spanish Fork. We work here and we love Spanish Fork. Saturday, September 18th, I was driving north down 2300 South. I noticed two little girls, 11, 12, walking down the road on the right and I looked back to see their faces. I thought I recognized them. I have never met Reagan and Olivia before, but I literally noticed these happy girls talking with not a care in the world. Unbeknownst to them, what was about to happen. It was heartbreaking when I came back literally minutes later, literally minutes, and found that these two girls had been hit by a car going east on North Canyon Road. It is heartbreaking to know the parents and many, many friends and family in our community who have been affected by this terrible accident. There have been many other accidents that have happened on this road and this intersection. And now I know that there are things that are financially planned for our city and I really think that we need to put those things aside and put an intersection in this area, 2300 South and Canyon Road. I think we need to push that to the top of our agenda. Thank you.
Emily Peterson. I also live close to this intersection and there's not a time I go through the intersection that I don't hold my breath. Whether I'm driving north on 2300, ready to turn left onto Canyon Road, oftentimes I have the person that's going to be heading south on 2300 wave me through, but you were there first and you should go. So there's all this like waving people through and are they going to go? Maybe I should go. And add into that pedestrians and it gets extra scary. Anyways, I just want to add to all their other comments, but another thing I'd like to say is I saw your advertisement downstairs to buy a banner for veterans. I understand this is for Memorial Day and usually you're honoring the memorial, the veterans that have passed away. But I have a veteran and sometimes it would be nice if we could have a banner for him. You know, if we have an excess of banners, that would be even better, but even if I could buy a banner for my front yard. Even, even take it out, you know, his place of employment. Well, it didn't happen today, but told he's not going to be retained because he doesn't fit in. And for a veteran with PTSD and very often receiving call that another buddy's taken his life. It would just be nice to have something that would honor him today instead of waiting until he dies. So if I could buy a banner for him to put somewhere, even in my own front yard, I would be grateful for that too. Thanks.
Thank you, Emily.
Melissa East. I too live right off of Canyon Road. I don't live at the intersection they do. Wallet's heartbreaking and I've been praying for those girls. I sit and think that could have been my child. We live up on the northern end, right by 6, Highway 6. And our kids attend Spanish Oaks, but we live on the other side in Somerset. While Nebo has been amazing to provide us a bus to get our kids to school, there's always that threat that bus is taken away because there's a shortage. And now the sun's out. Just this morning I was driving home and two kids flagged me down so that they could cross the street to get home at the intersection of 1530 South and Canyon. If I hadn't seen them, they could have darted right across the street on those little scooters this morning. We could have had another tragedy. It could be my kids. There's three intersections with no crosswalks. The sun is out. Every day I pick my kids up if I can't, if they can't get on the bus because I can't let them walk home. They want to ride their bikes. They want to ride their scooters. They have Walk to School Day to celebrate the opportunity, but my kids don't get that opportunity because there's not one crosswalk at either intersection that goes into Somerset or the one after that. All intersections that lead to summer or to Spanish Oaks Elementary. Something also has got to be done on that end because kids don't want to ride the bus when it gets nice and kids are constantly wanting to go across the street to play with their friends because all the friends live on the other side. So, and I know there's that also, that neighborhood right past or right bef, you know, further south for Somerset that's just being developed. We have over 50 kids just in Somerset that have to get over there for school who don't want to get on the bus and want to be able to walk and ride. I don't want another tragedy, so I, I would, and I've even contacted the state about a year ago about getting crosswalks. I don't know what kind, with lights, not with lights, but something's got to be done so our kids can get to school safe and not always have to rely those elementary kids on the bus. Because we know buses, bad things happen too. That's why I drive my kids to school. Because it's not safe for them to walk anyway. So I hope we can look at those intersections as well to make it to where our kids can get to school safe. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Cambria Wright. Just wanted to thank the mayor and council members for allowing me to be here. I first wanted to recognize your hard work, especially working with UDOT. I'm also here to speak on 2300 East and Canyon Road intersection. I can't imagine how hard your job is working with UDOT on that and I recognize that you've said that a light is going to be put in place, so I really appreciate that. I am frustrated with the timing that it's taking so long. So I'm just here to provide maybe some action items. I'm really excited to hear the update. Short term, I suggest that we either close that roundabout like Bryce said, that road north of Canyon. I would love to see traffic calming measures on Canyon Road. There are currently five lights on Canyon Road from 2550 East all the way down to Main Street and the speed limit there is 45. So maybe a long-term solution is lowering the speed limit. I think that traffic lights are going to slow the traffic anyway. If we can just decrease the speed between the lights, that would be really helpful. Immediate, short-term, getting a speed limit wagon put out there tonight, tomorrow morning, as soon as we can, just to help drivers be aware of their speed. Anything that we can do to narrow that roadway. I've loved what you guys have done on 1150 East near Larson Elementary School. I drove past there today too, just to remind myself what that looks like. I love the bike lanes that are painted that you've done, the green for the bike lanes where the intersections are crossed in the crosswalk, the barriers there. It really, really helps drivers to be aware of pedestrians and cyclists and I think that would be a great solution for Canyon Road as well if that's possible. So, thank you.
Thank you, Cambria. Anyone else?
My name is Shelley Jamison. I live in the area too. Olivia is my next door neighbor. I'm going to try to do this without crying. My daughter crosses that street multiple times a month. Probably, she's older now, so she thinks she deserves a ride everywhere, but that could have easily been my daughter and as soon as I found out, I reached out to her and said, you need to call all your friends and find out where they're at. Once I found out there were two girls in the roadway. And of course, my neighborhood started talking and I'm in the Young Women's Group and our Young Women's Group started texting all of our girls to make sure they were accounted for. And of course, one of them wasn't accounted for because she was in the road. So, I wanted to talk about, there were painters there that were hired, I'm assuming by the city, and they were painting the the arrows on the road. I came upon the scene about 15 to 20 minutes after it happened. I didn't know what was going on. I didn't see a car involved or multiple cars involved like there normally is and so I was confused and then of course, when I figured everything out, my attention started to go towards the girls and my neighbor and everything else and until I read a comment on KSL that there were painters there and then it sparked my memory that there were painters there and that they were blocking part of the intersection. And I really believe that that contributed to the accident, that they were blocking the driver that hit the girls that they probably couldn't see. And on multiple occasions and everyone who lives over there knows, you pull up to go left off of 23 onto Canyon and you scoot up and the person next to you gets there and now you can't see over here. So then you scoot up and they scoot up and everyone starts scooting up and now the corner where the girls are at is completely blind to the driver and the girls can't see past all of the three cars or whoever is lined up to go their different ways. So the whole intersection needs a major rebound and I think we need to do better at if people are painting lines that they need to set up a better... There needs to be a sign that says "Men at Work" or whatever they would put out. My husband was a safety manager for a large company and when I told him kind of what was going on, he said that's, there's no way that that was okay. There's not enough safety things in place. And I just think this, I know this could have been prevented for sure. And that's really sad to think that, you know, we could have probably prevented this, but there was just a lot of factors at play. So, thank you.
Spencer Flint. I'm not from Spanish Fork, but I love it here and we plan on staying forever and I, yeah. It was really... Sorry. It was really hard because I was there as well and I stopped for them to pass and made eye contact with them. I saw, I saw it in slow motion. I mean, it was terrible. I know you guys are doing your best, or at least I hope you are. I don't follow much of what goes on with the city and I don't know any of you, but I do think things could be done better. And, you know, sure, we've got some time before this gets put in, but in thinking back, you know, it's not a perfect picture in my mind, but I also think that truck was probably blocking the view of both the girls and the driver and that shouldn't have been the case. And anyways, one idea I thought of that might be helpful is painting a crosswalk. I've seen before, there's like A-frames that blink. You just, as a pedestrian, turn a light. They both start blinking. You carry a flag. And maybe, you know, most teenagers aren't going to grab that flag, but hopefully they would with what's happened. And I could see that being a very inexpensive temporary solution. I also look forward to hearing what you guys have in mind and I hope for the best here. Thank you.
Thank you.
James Hilton. I live over by the high school, so a fair distance away, but mostly I just want to see something actionable of safer cities. I like the idea of the, putting out the trailer to the speed limit thing that reminds us what speed we're going. I don't know, anything that can help calm down traffic. Everyone else has been a bit more eloquent and so I'm just going to say ditto.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name's Carrie Swinson and I don't live on that street, but my sister does. And my kids, my two boys, often are at her house. And the thing that blows my mind is when that street went in, the first thing I said to my boys is, don't you dare cross that road. That's too dangerous. I don't have a degree in engineering or whatever it is, but if I can tell that it's a dangerous road, I don't understand how it's just left with no crosswalk or anything. Anybody in that area can tell you it's going to be dangerous. The thing that I don't understand and I'm not meaning any disrespect whatsoever, but there are a lot of cities, a lot of streets in this city that are very dangerous, whether it's cars parked on both sides of the road and they're very narrow, that if you are, if you go and ask the actual people who live in those areas, they can give you a lot more information than what a degree in city engineering or whatever it is is going to tell you because they're living there. They can tell you what time the kids are crossing the streets and how many kids cross the streets. They can tell you the busier traffic. They can give you all that information that you're not going to get from a degree. And I don't understand why the city doesn't go and consult and sending out a survey, putting it on Facebook, isn't going to cut it because a lot of people don't see it. And honestly, I don't mean this rude, but a lot of times when I see them, I'm like, what does it matter if I fill it out? My opinion, it's not going to matter because you do the opposite anyway. And so you kind of, I feel like you have to regain the citizens' trust in some of these areas because it's gone. And I feel like in order to do that, talk to them in these areas. On that street, on 2300 East, whatever it is, the speed limit was raised and the school is right there. And so a bunch of the neighbors went and it took them a while, but they were able to talk to somebody and they got it lowered again and, and they said, well, we didn't even really, we didn't even think about that. They cut out some of the lanes. I don't remember all the details of it, but if you would have gone and talked to them, whether it's knocking door to door, you would have known that that's too dangerous. 35 is too busy for that street. If you have to, when that road comes in, if UDOT's going to do it, slow Canyon Road's speed limit down. I would gladly drive 25 miles an hour, 20, 15 if I have. If it's safe, I would do it. Anybody would. Put police officers there and give tickets left and right so they know you're serious. Slow it down. This is dangerous. My kids, I kept telling them, don't cross there. Don't cross there. Well, guess what? One day they come home with candy from Walmart and I said, well, how did you get that? We took the scooters. We didn't walk across. We took the scooters. So why are we leaving this responsibility or to our kids who have limited experience and limited knowledge of how dangerous it is to just cross? I mean, I can't be with them 24/7. I can't wrap them in bubble wrap. But these intersections that are so dangerous, why are they even being put in without those safety precautions? Put in, like crosswalks, police, something, something has to be done. You can't just say it's going to be two years. You can't just say it's gonna be two years. That's not gonna cut it. You have to have some temporary solutions and maintain them to keep our kids safe. And talk to the residents. They will let you know. Thanks.
Hi. So I live on the other end of twenty-three hundred. And I've got a seventeen-year-old driver and I've got a...
Could you give Terry your name?
Oh, I'm sorry, Raymond Gibby.
Thanks, Raymond.
Some of you may know my name just because I'm the guy that sculpted the bronze sculpture that's in that roundabout. But I've been nervous ever since the roundabout went in and they opened it up because I've got these young drivers in my family. Like I said, a seventeen-year-old and one who's just about to start driver training. And sometimes it's hard for me to get through that intersection because it seems like most people don't know how to go through an intersection like that. They don't know if the person going straight has the right of way or if the person who got there first has the right of way. And so, we're always playing this game of waving at each other, you know? And what might end up happening is, you know, we wave and stick our nose halfway out into the intersection because the other person doesn't know what to do, and both of us get munched. And so, that's been my concern ever since it came in. But now, I see there's another concern. I've never let my kids go across that street, even though they've wanted to. And I've said, "It's too much, you know, too. I can't keep an eye on you there." So, I'm sorry, you're not gonna be able to go across that street unless you go clear up there, and they don't wanna do that. I did just wanna read one thing, and I haven't fact-checked this or anything. I have a very close friend who works for UDOT. And I went ahead and asked him. I said, "What's the situation? I heard that UDOT's in charge of that." And he says, "I talked to our regional director this morning. He said that Spanish Fork City wanted to be in charge of installing this signal light at twenty-three hundred east Canyon Road intersection. They were given the money last year from UDOT, so it's one hundred percent the city that there is no, on the city that there's no signal light there yet." This is just a text that I got from my friend who works for UDOT, but he got it from his directional, from his regional manager, from his director. So, I have not followed this or know anything about it, but it is kinda interesting that he's saying that it is, it is our responsibility now to take care of it, so.
Thank you, Anna.
Hi, I'm Alexis Laureen. I am Reagan's older sister, and I really wanted to come here. And I really don't wanna say too much because my husband Peyton said pretty much everything that I was thinking. I agree with everyone wholeheartedly with every idea that has been said. Something needs to be done tonight, whether it's like a speedwagon, a police officer out there. Something needs to be done tonight, temporary until something can actually be done. Sidewalk can be painted, something. And I agree, I can't remember the lady's name, but you hundred percent need to gain our trust back. And you gave my trust back. Like, people are mad, and you guys need to do something. And it's devastating that my sister and her best friend, who, you know, like my husband said, that she's in our ward, so I know her family. It's devastating that we have to go through this, and we're the ones that are dealing with all of this. So, thank you.
Anyone else?
Dani Jolly. I wasn't planning on saying anything, but after the information of this gentleman contacting UDOT and saying that the city has had the money for over a year, I would suggest that we get started tonight with construction, or at least within the next twenty-four to forty-eight hours, if you guys have been sitting on our taxpayer dollars. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you. Thank you again all for your comments and questions. Was that... Is there another comment? Did somebody else wanna come up? I don't wanna close it before. Thank you.
My name's Kristy Nettland, and I am the neighbor. I didn't wanna get up because I cried. And why I feel like you may be sincere on your statement you put out to the city. I, I don't believe it because, like, and it's just more proof of what that gentleman said. We've had this money for a year. What the hell has happened? And I know some of you know me, so I'm sorry for my language, but get your act together, honestly. Let's go.
I'm sure, I'm sure that's, I'm sure that's part of the discussion. Yeah, thanks. Anyone else? Okay. Sing Non, thank you. Thank you again for the comments. Chris Thompson is our city engineer here in the city. Again, it's not lost on asking Chris to share a few facts, a few timeline details here. It's not lost of what those mean, as I've communicated to the families. Facts are sometimes without feeling. And so, it's, it is what you're doing to support your neighbors, your friends, and your families. Those are, those are super important. So, please, know that, yes, Chris Thompson is our city engineer and lives in the same neighborhood. Lives in your neighborhoods as well and has raised his kids there too. So, it's not a faceless city engineer, a government official, talking about these facts. It's, it's a father that's raised his kids in the same, in the same place, like all of us. So, Chris, if you could come up and...
Well, first of all, I'd like to applaud all these people and the people who reached out to us these last few days for advocating for their neighborhood and for their friends. And I just can't believe the loss, and it's so sad. And I wish there was something I could say to, to help with that. I do sit on a traffic safety committee with the police, the fire, the engineering, the roads. And, and I can tell you that they care deeply and take every accident personally. They go to the accidents and they do all they can to try to figure out how to make the road safer. And they really care. And, and they live, a few of them in this area. And it's such a sad thing for everyone. The mayor's asked me to give a little bit of history on this. And one of the things that, that is, is hard is that a lot of intersections like this with UDOT, they need to warrant a signal before it's put in. And so, with development, the early phases of development often require an access like this. But they won't warrant a signal until after the development's in place. And so, we required the access with the development, as shown. But it wasn't until a few months after it was opened in twenty-twenty-two that the warrant came that, that a signal was warranted here.
Chris, sorry to interrupt. Can you specify who does, who warrants the signal?
Okay, so, so this is a UDOT road. So, we immediately, as soon as it was opened, asked UDOT to do the warrant study. They conducted this study over a period of time and came back with that it is warranted. There's several intersections in the city, even along Canyon Road, that warrant a signal. And, and they don't have them yet because of funding issues. And so, one of the things that, that we indicated to UDOT back then is that this was a huge priority right here for a signal and really pushed for getting that, that done. After it went into twenty-twenty-three, we reached out to UDOT and we said, "What can we do to get this signal sooner?" And what was explained to us is if we were able to hire out the designer and get that done now, they would reimburse us for the cost of the design. And then, if we paid for the signal to be constructed, then they would reimburse us for the cost of the construction. That would speed up the process. And so, we, we went into an agreement with them as soon as we found out this is an option. And, and we took on hiring an engineer to design the signal. Those plans still had to be reviewed by UDOT so that they met all their criteria. And, and there's quite a review process for a signal, which is a good process. It is very important that you build signals to a lot of different standards and that they're done right. And, and so, it finished that process a few weeks ago. As soon as UDOT approved those plans for a signal here, we let out the bid. So, as soon as we possibly could, we let out the bid for that signal. And that bid opening was, was, those bids were due this week. And, and construction should start really, really soon. Now, we've gotten a lot of great residents reaching out to us and talking to us about, "Well, what do we do right now immediately?" And it's, it's a big concern. I, I live in that area. I have a fourteen-year-old boy who goes across there quite often. And I can't imagine what it'd be to lose him. I, I, I feel so much for you, and I'm so sorry. I can't, I can't imagine what you're going through. One of the things that is very important to us, as well as a lot of the residents that we've, we've talked to, is what can we do right now, immediately, to, to make this safer? And as we discussed it with the traffic engineers and the different people involved, it seems like the best way to really cut off crossing there by pedestrians is with construction signage that will be needed for, for constructing the signal. The construction on the signal should start in the next week, week and a half. That's, that's already been in place for quite some time. And so, timing is, is really sad about that. But, but what we have done is we've reached out to the contractor, who is also a local business, who cares deeply about this situation and cares deeply about the safety in our community. He lives in this community. And, and he has agreed to go and put up that pedestrian detour, if you will, which will stop pedestrians, kids at that intersection and detour them down the road to the signal at Spanish Fork Parkway. We've talked to him. He still had to go through a permitting process with, with UDOT and with, with a company that could respond quickly with all of the equipment and all the signs to detour those, those pedestrians. And, and he feels like he might be able to get all that in place sometime tomorrow and get that set up tomorrow. And then, also, very committed to making this his top priority for construction and do all he can to get this signal constructed as soon as possible. And, and, and so, as far as construction goes, a signal typically takes a couple of months to do. This, this involved some, some other complexities beyond just, you know, installing four signal poles. And so, there's a little bit of work to be done here. But we're hopeful that in, in the next couple of months, we should have the signal in place and, and crosswalks and all of that. I also want to just make sure everyone feels like coming to us and talking to us about situations is so important. There's, there's a hundred and something miles of road in our, in our city. And, and sometimes we get the best alerts, situations that need to be solved and maybe different ways to solve them from, from our residents. And we really appreciate their input. And so, with that, I'd be happy to talk to anyone if, if they want to come and talk to me. Our, our traffic engineers are the same way. They're very caring people. They actually live in this area too. And, and I'm sure they'd be, they'd be happy to talk through concerns or what have you to, to, to just make sure that, that people feel safe and they feel like the city's doing all they can to, to help with the safety in the community. It's, it's, it's a big challenge. And, and I think if we all work together, if we all advocate together, I think, I think we can make things better, and that's our goal.
Chris, can I ask you a couple of questions?
Sure.
One of the thoughts that was brought up tonight is about that traffic coming from the roundabout. As a part of the construction signers that we have them putting up to close the pedestrian sign, can we put something that says "Local Traffic Only" or something like that at the roundabout to reduce the number of people that are going through that area while we're trying to get this figured out?
Yeah, we can, we can look into that. I think that was one of the suggestions.
And then, I do have a concern, and maybe you can clear it up, that thought that was talked about with the finance, that it was us. So what you're saying is that we went to bid as soon as we had the approval from UDOT?
Yeah, so, so normally, UDOT has a whole contingency that does signals. They fund them and, and they prioritize them. They have hundreds of intersections across the state that need signals. And so, not always can you get your signal immediately. A lot of times, you have to wait. Seventeen hundred east on Canyon Road has warranted a signal for maybe ten years now, and, and they still don't have a signal yet. But the city, we went to UDOT and said, "How do we, how do we prioritize? How do we get this done quicker?" And that's when this opportunity for us to, to get it built came. And as soon as, as soon as we had that opportunity, we, we hired an engineer to get it designed. And, and that design has to go through a review process with UDOT. That process was not completed until three weeks ago, so.
And one last question. I apologize for commandeering for a second. On UDOT roads, what is the process for a request to lower speed limits? I don't, I'm assuming that doesn't just come from us. I'm assuming that is like, we see those reports when they get, I don't wanna say a complaint, but that's probably the right word, a complaint from citizens that says that the speed limit on this road is too fast. Is that the best way to do that, or is there another way that we should, that someone would go about reducing that, that speed?
One thing that, that our traffic engineers are very good at is not passing the buck to UDOT. If, if a resident calls them and says, "We would like the speed limit lowered in an area," we take that to UDOT and we request it on their behalf. It does, it does help if the residents request it as well. But we take, even though it's a UDOT road, we take the safety on that road very seriously. And we make sure that, that any input that we get from the residents is passed on. And we make sure that, that any input that we get from the residents is passed on. And, and we meet with UDOT quarterly and follow up on those. But we also follow up immediately on the phone. We have relationships with them. We meet, we have a smaller group that meets monthly with them. And so, uh, if, if you wanted to advocate for a, a lower speed limit on a UDOT road, uh, you can talk to us. We'll take that to UDOT and request a, what's called a speed study to be done. Uh, these, these speed limit studies are conducted by UDOT. Uh, cities, uh, are not, are not involved with, with the conduction of those studies. But basically what they do is, is they will, uh, follow what is called the Federal Highways Administration, um, focus standards on, on, on what warrants are for a speed on, on a roadway. And then that's how they'll set, set the speed. And so, uh, we're happy, we're happy to approach UDOT with, with any of those requests. We, I'm not aware of any requests like that, that we haven't taken to UDOT. We don't always get, uh, the right answer, uh, quote unquote, what, what we think is the right answer. Um, based on those, you know, the studies, they, they follow some strict guidelines on how they're done. And, and, uh, a few times we've asked for a speed study in different areas and UDOT's come back and said, it actually warrants a higher speed. And we said, well, cancel the speed study. We don't want, we don't want a higher speed. But, but, uh, I, I want to also say that the people at UDOT that we've been talking to this last little while, uh, have been very, very sad about this situation. They, they are good engineers who care about safety. And, and I, my heart goes out to them because I know they want to do a signal everywhere that is warranted. And I just know that they can't. And, and, uh, I, I can, I can feel for them in that they care very deeply whenever an accident happens. And, and when they say zero fatalities is their goal, uh, when I talk to them, it really is their goal. They, they are very saddened by any loss of life at any intersection. And, and, and there's a lot of complex issues and there's, it's, it's hard to prioritize things. And, and so I, I would never want, uh, it to be said that I was pointing the finger at them that this could possibly be their fault. I, I'm just saying there's processes and there's, there's budgets that they follow. And, 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 um, we, we work with that. And, and, uh, I, I, I know that our traffic engineers are doing, uh, the best they possibly can. And I, I, I really, I really want everyone to understand that they care deeply. I, we have one traffic engineer that, that re- actually goes out to every accident he cans. And, and as soon as he can, he will go and try to recreate how it happened and what, what can we do? And he'll bring to our traffic safety committee, all right, this is what I think we can do to make this intersection safer. Uh, but quite often, if you drive up on an accident, he's there flagging people because, uh, uh, he's, he's first going to help with the safety of, of the pe- people in that intersection. The car's coming towards it. And then as soon as it's safe, then, then he's taking a hard look at, uh, okay, is there anything we can do to make this safer? And, and, and I've seen how deeply he cares and how hard he works. And, and, uh, and I know that he lives in this neighborhood actually. And, 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 and this particular one has hit him, uh, really hard. He, uh, it's, this is a tough, tough situation. And I, I just, uh, I have been praying with my family for these two families ever since I heard about it. I know he is. I know everyone just cares deeply. And, and, and whenever I get a call, I, I do not feel bad, even if there's, there's intense feelings. Cause I know that there's advocating going on and I know that people care for, for their neighbors. And I love that. And I also know that we get a lot of good, good ideas. And we become aware of, of, of important things to know, uh, when people reach out. And so I would say continue to, to do that. Come, come to meetings, speak out. You know, you try to understand what's going on. Try to help us understand what's going on. You can call us at any time and, 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 and we really want, want to help. And, and we want zero fatalities in our office. Uh, we, that's our goal.
Chris, I have a question. Or do you have?
Go ahead, Stacy. I'll follow you.
So if Spanish Fork had money in the budget to put the light there, are they legally allowed to because it's a UDOT road?
No, you, you would have to get that agreement that I talked about that we got last year.
Okay.
You can't, you, you cannot touch a UDOT road without, without the permitting.
But could they give approval? Like, oh, if you want to put it in, yeah, go ahead and spend the million dollars and you can pay for it? Have they ever been known to do that?
Um, I, I'm sure they would allow it, but we still would have had to gone through the process to get it approved. So, um, it's, I don't see a way it could have been designed and ready to go sooner than it was.
And then someone made a suggestion. I can't remember who, of just like, there's not enough sidewalks on Canyon Road. Will that fall under UDOT's jurisdiction as well? Or can the city step in and see what we can do to help make sure there's walking paths for everybody?
I, I, I feel like, uh, the city could take a hard look at that.
Okay.
I, I think that's a, a great thing to look at, actually.
Okay.
I have just a couple of asks, no questions, but just a couple of asks. And I'll start with Chief Johnson. How many speed trailers do we have?
Two. I've actually been in contact with Lieutenant Harding. We're going to have one up there first thing tomorrow.
Thank you. That's my first ask. Second, I know Jesse, Councilman Cardinal already mentioned it with the road north leading to the roundabout. I, if, if we're only a couple of months away of possibly having the light put in, I, I would request that that road just be closed, even through traffic. There's emergency vehicles, I think, I think emergency vehicles that need to get to the condos that are being built could access that or would access that probably going the other route through the roundabout by Walmart.
Yeah, the fire station, right?
Yeah, they're going to go that way anyways.
That way anyway, yeah.
Um, the only people that would need that road are people going to Walmart, which they could, for the next two months, we could, we could slow them down a little bit, make them go the other route. So I, I would encourage and recommend that we look at just closing that road at the roundabout and north off Canyon Road until, until the lights can get in.
I think a couple individuals who came up today were, were concerned that having some, some si- uh, painting maintenance going on created one more diversion that, that might have contributed to the accident. I think constructing a signal would definitely be somewhat of a diversion and that might be a good way to, to minimize.
I have just one question as well, Chris. Um, so earlier you mentioned, you told us that if we'd like to contact you to converse or your, uh, traffic engineers, that we could do that. What's the most effective way for residents to do that? So we can have conversations with you?
So, so our, our phone numbers are on the website. And so I, I would encourage you to, to, to reach out. You can call. You can come in. Our office is just right next door. Um, uh, mine is. The traffic engineers are actually in the old rec center. So you could, you'd be welcome to go there and visit with them. I, I feel like, uh, any one of us would be happy to, to hear your concerns. And it doesn't matter which one you go to. Uh, we all meet together regularly and we talk about things. And so, uh, calling, you could email, whatever you feel most comfortable with, we'd be happy to listen.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else for Chris? I would say one concern that's brought up about, uh, uh, the incidents and, and details of it. Um, we don't need Chief to necessarily speak to it, but it is, uh, accident reconstruction, an investigation that's, that's ongoing. And so those statements are being taken to figure out what was, what was there, what was present, what was going on. And, uh, and that report, um, gets done at, at some time, but it's in the process of, of gathering all those statements and, and making sure that it's constructed, reconstructed correctly. Anything else for Chris from up here? Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Chris.
His question was.
Go ahead, Jesse.
His question was Kenny saying the contractor on it, and I think Chris said no.
Sorry, guys. Uh, kept all the comments here today, kind of make it sound like these girls have already passed away. It's kind of be cognizant of our language, please.
So it's with permission. Oh, go ahead. Mr. Carroll, yes?
Thank you for the opportunity to ask questions, Chris, from, uh, Maple Meadows. Chris, uh, with all due respect, um, I don't see how we're going to shut that intersection down to pedestrian traffic, putting up some, uh, you know, some orange barriers and a sign. The kids are just going to walk around it. Um, these are teenagers, man. They're not going to stop for a sign. Um, I really think our needs would be better served with having some kind of, uh, some kind of signaling for pedestrians that are waiting to cross. I think drivers are respectful enough to, to slow down or stop for that. But I don't think you're going to stop kids with orange wire and a sign. These kids are getting out of school tomorrow and there's going to be a hundred kids that cross that road between now and, and Saturday night. And, uh, this is, as others have said, this is just another tragedy waiting to happen.
Appreciate that. Uh, we, we will bring that up with, with UDOT. Everything, all the signage will have to be permitted through UDOT. And so we'll, we'll, we'll do our best to come up with the, the most safe possible way to, to provide that construction sign. There, there are some things that I've seen in, in maybe some larger cities that, that are more effective than others and, and we'll take a hard look at that. I, I, I can imagine my fourteen-year-old, uh, stepping over a barricade. Exactly. He's, he's my seventh kid. And so, uh, I've seen, I've seen what they, they're capable of a little bit. And so I, I totally get it, what you're saying.
Yeah, the, the safety and, and, uh, debate and discussion about, about the immediacy and, and what can be done is the balance of without a light being constructed, which, which has taken some time. The invitation of crossing and making something seem safe or safer to cross without a light to stop, uh, is, is the debate and discussion happening between people that, that aren't, believe me, not, not one-off, but, but, but are doing this, you know, for a profession and, 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 and trying to gain that input from, from people that, that are debating them and discussing. And then input from obviously you residents that, uh, that are there and seeing it every day. So, so it's a great, great suggestion, great comment. Yes, ma'am?
Sitting back there listening to the temporary solutions. And my husband actually builds roads and bridges and shuts down roads and the freeway and all that kind of stuff. And he's, um, a project engineer for RL, um, RLW Construction. And, um, one of the things that they use sometimes on, you know, city roads or whatever are temporary traffic signals. They're an actual signal and we could set those up through UDOT. UDOT has these. They're on trailers. I'm sure you know what I'm talking about. And that is probably the best solution because it's an actual traffic signal. Now, there's some setting up. I was just talking to my husband. He came and got the kids. But I was just talking to my husband. I says, do you think that would be a temporary plausible solution? And he goes, absolutely. He says, they're not perfect, but it would be better than trying to prevent kids blocking off the road. Cause like this gentleman said, they're not going to, they're not going to obey signs. It's the shortest straight, you know, as the crow flies. So that's what they're going to take. So if we could get some temporary traffic signals on the trailers, set those up, I think that's your best solution.
Okay, so, uh, I, I think some of these, these ideas might take a little bit of time to get through UDOT. Uh, so if you see us immediately doing some stuff, uh, uh, tomorrow, uh, just know that the, the conversation with UDOT is continuing on.
Would you like some consulting with my husband? He's in touch with all the big people in UDOT.
Yeah, I, if you reach out to us, if you, if you reaches out, we, we really, we really take every, every person who reaches out seriously.
Okay.
And we pass it on. I just didn't want people to be concerned if all the ideas weren't implemented immediately. Some of these I know take a little bit of time. I don't have a lot of experience with those types of signals, so I don't know.
He's got forty-five years of experience.
Right, so I don't know, uh, how, how that gets approved through.
Well, he knows how to do that. So I'll have him reach out to you so that we can get some, some immediate results in that.
But, but the contractor has been very gracious about getting a, 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 a crew out there tomorrow to set up all that they can set up immediately. And so, um, uh, I know it probably won't be a fourteen-year-old boy-proof, but, uh, we'll do all we can. And, 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 and we, we love the feedback. And, and, and anyone who can reach out and come up with ideas is great. I'm, I'm, I'm not a traffic engineer, although sometimes I feel like I am because I have a driver's license. But, uh, UDOT, it, almost the whole organization is traffic engineers. And, and so there's a lot, there's a lot of.
Nothing against UDOT's traffic engineers, but sometimes they're a fry short of a Happy Meal because they don't drive their projects first. They just look great on paper and so they push it through. Sometimes it's like my husband says, you got to take a little drive to really make it make sense. So, you know, I know about the traffic engineers and stuff and that's fabulous, but let's get the whole Happy Meal.
Do you know what? I, I, I totally agree. Not all engineers are created equal. I've noticed that.
They have their, they have their degree. They have their degree. And then, you know, people like my husband who have forty-five years, like their PhD from the School of Hard Knocks, then because he doesn't have his little paper coming out of school, he coaches all of the little teeny boppers that come through because he knows more than what the people with their degree have. So.
When I, when I first started as an engineer, a contractor, sounds very similar to your, your husband, uh, became the inspector at the city. And I feel like he taught me most, all I know about engine. So I totally agree. In fact, one of the things he said is, is always reach out to the contractors. They'll teach you.
A lot.
Love, love to visit with your husband.
I'll have him reach out to you. Thank you.
Yeah.
It was Danny, correct?
Yes, Danny Jolly.
Thank you, Danny.
Good day.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Gabe Hamilton. Um, if you guys get me a, a vest and a flag, I'll go sit out there at that intersection and help people cross. I don't, I'm not doing anything tomorrow until six. I got class. But I'd be willing to stand out there with a vest and a flag and help people cross. It's not that hard.
Thank you, Gabe.
Thank you.
Mayor, I've got one more thing to bring up. Separate from the twenty-three hundred, Emily, you, you came up and, and spoke of your husband. Well, you first of all, thank him for being a veteran. And second, if you want a banner for your husband, we will, we will make some changes and you will have a banner for your husband.
Thank you. Um, it was brought up, these, these girls are, uh, fighting and their families are praying for miracle after miracle. They gave me permission to share, uh, that, um, that there is, you know, the physical, the, the mental cost of, of what this is. Uh, there's the financial cost as well. They gave me permission to share. Uh, there, there are some legitimate GoFundMe pages for these, these girls. And so you should be able to find those linked on the, um, on the, the pages, uh, the statements and things like that. But I'll share them personally as, as well. If you have the resources, please help out this. Uh, the girls have a, a long, a long row, uh, road ahead of them and, um, and are not even close to out of the woods of, of anything. And, um, their families, um, their families could use all the help we could give them. And so, so please, if you're in a position to, uh, please donate. Thank you, everyone, for your comments, your questions. They've all been written down. Um, we're. We're going to follow them all to the most possible and quickest and fastest degree to make this area safer, safer for your kids, safer for you as a community and as a neighborhood. So thank you, thank you for coming tonight, taking time out of your schedules and being here. We can feel your love, your passion, and your anger and your mourning as well, and it's all, it's all what we're feeling as well, and so thank you, thank you for being an important part of your neighborhood and your community and these girls' lives, so thank you. We have a next part of our agenda is council comments, where council will report of the committees that have been on this week, reporting what they need to back to this larger body. We'll start on this end with Councilman Took and go to Councilman Carden here.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll start with Catherine Levitt of the Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you, everyone. Well, I wanted to just start off by thanking the mayor and council for joining our new networking last week. It was a huge deal for you to come and speak to our business community, they really appreciated your time and hearing from you directly, so thank you for taking the time to come and do that. Just a couple of things to announce, on June 6th, the Shepherd's Carpet is going to be having a ribbon cutting for their new location. It's 250 West, 500 South in Spanish Fork, so that's June 6th at noon, and then our next month's new networking is going to be on June 20th. I did bring, because I just got them today, the traveling trophy for our Battle of the Forks Pickleball Tournament. We did have to reschedule that, but we're shooting for a new date, hopefully in the fall, so I just wanted to show you because I think it's cool. So I'll bring it up and show you the traveling trophy, that hopefully American Fork, or sorry, Spanish Fork will hold it this year.
That's nice, very good. Thanks, Kathleen.
Thank you Kathleen, I'm pretty sure I called you Catherine, so I apologize. Not sure how that happened. Thank you so much, Kathleen. I just have a couple of quick items I'd like to share with the city. The first one is just a report on the Health and Wellness Fair that we had on Saturday, also known as Fit City. I have a couple of pictures, if they work, we can show you kind of, give you a glimpse of what happened. It was a wonderful event, we had so many wonderful businesses, local businesses that were present. I was able to help with the other council members, interview them and get to know them better and their services. This is just one example, the boxing gym here, really enjoyed getting to know them and just seeing how they can help our city just be even more wonderful. We also had some other fun things that we did. There was a race earlier in the morning, we had the Miss Spanish Fork Royalty there as well, you could see some of us with them. There was also the candy, or the prize drop where I had the opportunity to go put on my brave face and climb the fire truck ladder, and I'll tell you, you know, facing your fears is the way to overcome them, because the second time I was able to go up there, it wasn't quite as bad and terrifying. So it was really fun to see all the smiles on the children's faces and to see them out there having a good time in good weather and, you know, throwing down Spanish Fork, you know, shirts and hats and so forth, and it just, everyone was having a wonderful time, and that was special for me and my first experience with that, so a couple of fun pictures there, thank you Nick. Also, just two final things, I was able to last night, I know I've seen some of you who were there also to attend the new Spanish Fork High School ribbon cutting, that was also a special event, and to say goodbye to the high school that so many of us attended, we've had for so many decades, and such a special building, so that was a special evening, and if you haven't had the chance yet to go tour that new building, boy, I recommend it. It is absolutely incredible, it's enormous, and it's equipped with technology for generations to come to bless the lives of our children, their children, and so forth, so that's exciting and just again wonderful for Spanish Fork's future and our prosperity. Last item is just a plug for, I serve on the library board, and just the summer reading program has just begun, it went live yesterday as a matter of fact, and so if you'd like to learn more about that, get involved, just go to our website, SpanishForkCity.org, and you can get involved with that, it's an amazing program, the summer reading program. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Took, appreciate that. Councilwoman Beck?
Okay, we had a busy weekend, it actually started on Friday morning out at, just north of the airport, was a groundbreaking ceremony for Utah Aviation, and this is going to be a $50 million project, and it's again just north of the airport on Main Street, and they'll be building hangars and be bringing business and building the economic development down there at the airport. And then Saturday afternoon, we went to the groundbreaking ceremony for the Gail Halverson Candy Bomber Museum. They will also have their museum north of the airport. The National Guard has donated the southwest corner of their property, and they're hoping within about two years to start that museum, that will just really help children and adults alike be introduced to science, technology, aviation. And that evening, they had a gala, and Lieutenant Governor Henderson was there, and it was a gala to raise money for that foundation. So if anyone in Spanish Fork has the desire to donate to the Gail Halverson Museum, that will be a great future thing for our children. And then, thank you Chris Thompson, I think he's outside, and Christian Davis, our airport director and our public works director for being there and supporting them in all those projects. And then just a reminder, Memorial Day is Monday, and at 10:30 a.m. will be the annual program there at the cemetery. If you've never been, I highly recommend it, it's just a really special event, it's short and sweet, maybe 30 minutes max, and it's just a beautiful tribute to our veterans. So that again will be 10:30 a.m. Monday morning.
Thank you, Councilwoman Beck. Councilman Oider?
Thank you, Mayor. So each month in the city, we have a lecture series that's put on by the Historic Preservation Commission, and yesterday we held a series at the old high school gym before it gets torn down in a couple of weeks, and we had the honor of having Pat and Jim Nelson be our speakers, and they shared the history of the Spanish Fork High School, and it was fantastic to hear all of the stories and the years and years of teachers and coaches that have helped our youth through that school. It was a great experience and great opportunity to hear from them. If you've been through the high school program, you know Coach Shu, and you know what a great influence and example he's been to the youth in our community. He was the Spanish Fork baseball coach for many, many years, 32 years I think he said, and in that time, they took home eight state championships and almost got more than that. That was a record for quite a while, until he reminded us yesterday that last year, that record was finally beat, and it was beat by the Spanish Fork High School softball girls team, who now have nine state championships and are fighting strong this year for a possible 10th. But just a great opportunity each month to learn a little more of the history of Spanish Fork. Next month, on June 17th, will be our next one, just across the hallway here in the Harrods Room, and at 7 o'clock, we'll have the opportunity to hear from former Mayor Steve Laufson as he discusses the history of Spanish Fork and our connections with Iceland, so we would invite everybody to come to that. That's all I have, thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Councilman Oider. Councilman Carden?
Thank you, Mayor. A lot of the things that have already been said, so I won't belabor them, I just want to take a moment and to thank two different groups of people, or I guess congratulate the, we have a lot of kids in our community graduating the next day or so. I want to congratulate the class of 2024. We have a lot of kids in our neighbor, in our community that have done a lot of good things and will do great things as they go forward, so congratulations to them as they move forward. And then Emily talked about it a little bit as we hit Memorial Day, but thank you to those that have served our country, that give us the freedoms that we have to meet, to talk, to discuss what needs to happen in our community. We look at some of the discourse that happens across our country in regards to politics, but when we're here in a city, we live together, we are together, we need to find ways and solutions to work together. So thank you, tell your husband thank you for me, for the rest of the council, I know Kevin's already mentioned that, but thank you to all that have served, and also to those that will go to the cemeteries, whether in our city or other cities, over the next couple of days or this weekend, and to pay respect to those that have passed away. We're with you like in that, and we hope that our cemetery crew has been diligently working, I know that they have been trying to prepare that. I believe that they will be putting the Flanders Field Thursday afternoon at 2:30, is that right? So if you have some extra time, I believe that they are still looking for volunteers to help to put out those, the crosses for the Flanders Field that will be there for Memorial Day weekend, so if you have a second and you can go, the more the merrier. It's a great experience if you haven't experienced that. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Carden. Before we move on to Item 7, consent items, entertain a motion if the council sees fit for a five-minute break before we go to the rest of our meeting. So moved. Motion made by Councilman Carden.
Oh, second.
Second by Councilman Oider for a five-minute break, all in favor, say yes?
Yes.
We're in a five-minute break, thanks, hold on just a minute. We're in a five-minute break, thanks, hold on just a minute. Thank you, thank you for that break, thank you again, presidents, for coming out, coming out to your council meeting. Item 7 on the agenda is consent items, the only consent item tonight are the minutes of our last meeting. If anybody's reviewed those and...
They were long.
They were long, it was a long meeting, it was 12:30.
I was just telling Tara, she writes, she really is, should write a book. She does a good job.
She's written multiple books with consent items.
Yeah, good job Tara.
Minutes. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent items.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Carden, seconded by Councilwoman Beck, all in favor say yes.
Yes.
Consent items are approved, takes us to eight, our public hearing for the night. This is a resolution of the City Council. Spanish Fork, providing the creation of GLH Public Infrastructure Districts Number 1 and 2. And Mr. Vaughn Pikel, to discuss that more with us.
We have a little presentation, if we could put that up on the screen. Tonight, their public hearing is considering adopting a resolution to create the first two public infrastructure districts in the city. The GLH Public Infrastructure Districts Number 1 and 2. A public infrastructure district is a separate and distinct entity from the city that's sole purpose is to finance and construct public infrastructure. The, let me, why don't we go to the maximum, the synthesizer. There we go. So, there's a map of the area, it's just south of the airport runway. The two districts there are shown in yellow, and they are about 161 acres, 164 it says there. There's also an expansion area of an additional about 39 acres. See if I can use this. That area there, and then also this area to the east of it. If you approve the creation resolution tonight and the governing document, that would also authorize those two areas to come into the public infrastructure district. Let's see here, so, the way that they accomplish their goal of constructing public infrastructure is that they are authorized to impose upon the property in the district an additional mill levy, a property tax on the property. All the owners of property and voters in the district need to consent to this creation and to the imposition of that tax. And so, they've proposed five mills, where that represents just half of one cent per dollar of assessed value, taxable value. And that additional tax on their property would be then pledged to issue bonds and debt for constructing that infrastructure. The infrastructure that gets built is built according to the city's standards and our specifications, so that when it's dedicated to us, we know that it is built to our standards and specifications. Let's see, the creation resolution and the governing documents also create a board of trustees that would govern the public infrastructure districts. And when the bonds are repaid, and finally, all the debt is discharged, then the districts themselves are dissolved, and they don't exist anymore. But they do exist during the time of that repayment and any of the construction, and until, like I said, all the debt is refunded, or repaid, I should say. Let's see, the maximum debt that they're proposing to issue is $20 million, and that will cover their estimated costs of the infrastructure they foresee now in that project area, with a little bit of a buffer for some future inflation, which unfortunately likely will happen. Are there any questions about the creation of the public infrastructure district?
I've got a couple.
Go for it.
You want to wait till, you want to wait till a public hearing, and then where they come?
Yeah.
You want to do that?
Yeah, what's that?
Okay.
Thank you Vaughn. I'd entertain a motion to go into public hearing for Item A.
So moved.
Motion made by Councilman Carden, seconded by, excuse me, Councilman Oiler, seconded by Councilman Carden. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
We're in public hearing for Item A, the creation of the PID. Anybody from the public that would like to speak to this item on the agenda? Seeing not an entertaining motion, go out of public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Councilwoman Beck, seconded by Councilman Carden, all in favor say yes.
Yes.
Discussion back up here, Councilman Carden?
No, I got some questions.
Questions for Mr. Vaughn Pikel on this?
There may, there's at least three, maybe more, ready for this one. So, the first one is, you talked about those two properties, the darker green, I guess, on the map, is what it looks like, that they could come into this district at some point.
Right.
What prevents the other VERC area, land, from coming into this PID?
They would have to be authorized by the city. So, if you approve the governing document tonight, it identifies those specific
Okay.
legal descriptions of these expansion areas.
Because we're already spelling it out?
Yep.
Okay, perfect.
You have to approve it.
So, the second part is, we are, by creating this district, we are relinquishing, and that's not the right word, I don't know what the right word is, we're giving some rights to this district?
Yeah, so, a PID has all the district, all the rights of a special district.
Special district.
Including, you know, the power to tax, like we discussed, and the power of eminent domain.
Correct, okay. So, a lot of this area that is adjacent to the highlighted area is currently in ag protection, right?
Right, yes, there's the money ag protection area that is a lot of this area.
Right along that. So, if this district was to try, or to go about, maybe they needed some right of ways that they weren't able to work with landowners across the way for, and they needed to get maybe access, whatever that is, right, where eminent domain is necessary, what would that process look like?
So, first of all, I think it's unlikely, because they're building infrastructure within their district.
Okay.
Right, and they, they already, they consent to the building of the infrastructure in their district. We do have some language we can include in the governing document that would, I guess, put some guardrails on them, limit them to only using it for approved improvements that the city agrees with, and then, that are also on our master plan. So, we can add that language, but even beyond that, because they're in the ag protection area, they still have to go to the Ag Protection Board and to the County Commission and receive their permission to do it.
So, they would have to go through those two entities first, or those organizations, whatever we want to use the word there, before that third step of eminent domain? But we can put the condition on that they would have to be meeting certain criteria, one of them being the city's, I guess, guidance or approval?
Approval.
In, and also that it's matching things that are already planned for?
In our master plans, yep.
Okay. So, we're not relinquishing the rights that they can just go hog wild and start eminent domaining everybody because they want a road somewhere, and because it's going to make their property pretty?
Right, and relinquishing is not the right term, like you mentioned it. The city still retains its authority. Because they are a district, they also have that authority. But, within those guardrails that would be established in the governing document.
Okay, I think that answers the question.
Okay. Thank you for those questions. Any other questions for Vaughn?
So, just to follow up then to Jesse's question. Is it possible to create a PID without allowing the special district? Same things that the special district has. Can you have a PID without having that eminent domain authorization?
No, not really. The state law for the public infrastructure districts says that they have all the same powers as a special district. So, if you create a PID, that's the powers they have.
And then, I guess if we're talking, maybe some discussion up here, when we talk about the VERC area, right, one of the reasons for this was the opportunity for some of this infrastructure, because if we talk about development on this side of the airport, it's almost impossible without some of that money, right? So, it's a little bit of, I don't want to say catch 22, but in order to have it, you almost have to have that.
Yeah, I think that's a good 10,000-foot level of reminding where we are down in the, down on the ground level now, to the point of creating policy and having public hearings and moving forward with some of these items that deal with VERC and with PIDs, is that the infrastructure, the public infrastructure cost of doing that as a city has always been completely prohibitive to put that in, and then hope that something's going to say, okay, now the utilities are here, I'll develop. It's putting it on them, and they're putting those utilities in to our specs for the benefit of the city, obviously, the benefit of their project being in there that is an economics subject. But, but these are public utilities that the Spanish Fork citizen is not putting in. The PID being created to elevate its own increment to do it.
Right, and I think that's where, I guess, my biggest concern about this has come, and Vaughn and I have talked about this quite a bit, is when the city has to go about, you know, eminent domain or doing those type of things, there's a delicate line in a way that that's done in a professional manner. We're giving a district that ability, and so, there's that little bit of a nervousness, right? Obviously, it's our first one, but the hope would be that this never is something that has to happen, but we just don't know, right, right now. But the property owners do have, I would say, some protections, especially those that are in the ag protection have a little bit more, but even those that are to the south or to the, I guess there's that little corner to the northwest, that potentially, I don't know what the infrastructure exactly looks like, but that they would have to meet the master plans of the city, also the city's permission or blessing to move forward.
Exactly. So, that language, I'm going to have it here, I can read it for the record if we want to include it. Says eminent domain, "The district shall not exercise eminent domain or utilize any funds of the districts to support any eminent domain action or proceeding unless A, the public improvements for which the eminent domain is proposed are permitted under this governing document, and approval for the project or separate agreement of the city, and B, their location complies with the master plan, infrastructure plan, or similar plan of the city or applicable service provider." So, we can add that to that governing document, and that will help kind of rein that in a little bit.
Vaughn, here's my concern, and see if you can help me address my concern. So, let's suppose we create a PID, we've got a PID, and those property owners, that organization decides that they need a highway, but they don't want it to go through their own properties, they want it to be on the adjacent properties of the PID, because, one, they get the highway right next to them, but they also get to keep all of their land, because the highway's not on their land. So, they choose to use eminent domain on the adjacent properties to put the highway on and leave their properties alone to benefit from having full access for development. Is that possible?
No, not likely possible, because the city, again, it has to be the city's plan. We decide where our roads go, and they are developing their property, but we're not going to export those burdens onto other properties. They'll need to build the roads on their property.
Then why not just have the city be the one that determines the eminent domain? I don't understand why.
Because the state law establishes that the PIDs have that authority, plus there's the added need that the district to have the power to issue tax exempt bonds needs to have that tax exempt status, they need to have the sovereign powers of taxation, which we discussed, and the eminent domain, which is another sovereign power. The only power they do not possess is the police power, the power to adopt ordinances and laws and zoning like we do, the city retains all that power.
Okay. So, a PID gets organized, and there's property based on our master plan, master transportation plan that has a designation for a highway. It's an adjacent property. They need that highway to be built to continue development within the PID, so they can begin, because it's part of the master plan of the city, they can begin discussions with those property owners to try and get the road in. If the property owners don't want to develop or don't want to sell to have that road in, at that point, they could step in and start the eminent domain process, which if the property's ag protected, remind me again, it would first need to go to the ag board?
Yeah, the ag board and the county commission, they have a public hearing. They have a hearing there, and then they have to give their consent.
And then the third would be, if we can put in additional guardrails, it would be the city?
Right, they would, no, they don't need to come to us per se. I mean, if it's already identified as our master planned street, that's what we want, then that's the approval.
So, that's all, so it wouldn't come before the city council, it's already in the master plan?
And the governing document, right? That's where we're designating that they can do that, for those specific facilities. They can't just make up a facility, oh, we want to do this. It's got to be in the city's approved plan for their project.
So, if it's outside of their area, they have to be using that governing document?
It's all bound by the governing document. The only powers they really have is what is granted to them through the governing document.
It sure seems like the hypothetical that you asked there, Councilman Oiler, is a pretty high bar, that if it's not, if it's not something that is shown why it's necessary, boy, I'd have a hard time seeing that get through the county commission and first your ag protection board.
Can we explain who sits on that ag board?
I don't know, all of them.
If you know, but some of the individuals.
County commissioner and the...
I think it was Rex Larson's?
Yeah, Rex Larson's the chairman of the...
I don't know all the others, no.
So, but fellow, you're not on there if you're not an ag guy, right?
I think when they interview you for, for, for... You're, I think when they interview you for 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 nomination of the ag protection board, they'll say, you like ag? I'm sure they say it in a more sophisticated way than that, but the ag protection board is in place to protect the agricultural rights of of those farmers. And so, again, that high bar of of show me why this road, this 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 easement, this utility, something needs to go here, has to line up with a lot of things before even making it to 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 their request. And then they could say, well, it doesn't look like it, doesn't look like it needs to go there. If the city's plan shows it goes here, why doesn't it go here?
Could the ag board's decision, one way or another, be overridden by the county or anyone else?
I don't think so. If my memory of the statute is that they both have to give consent.
So then another question maybe is, so there's some properties to the south of this and just we obviously know that the money ag protection is to the west of this property or that we're talking about. So if the properties to the south, if they wanted to become ag protective, they still could at this moment go about that process and ag protect themselves to give themselves that actual protection.
They'd make an application with the local jurisdiction, some of those areas in the city, some, you know, is in the county. They would go to whichever one.
That was just a maybe a random question I just thought of.
I think a lot of this already is, at least in the county.
I think some of it is, yeah.
I don't know how much of it is. We need another color on here so we can see it.
Any other questions on?
Any questions for Vaughn on this?
Resolution.
No, I'm comfortable with it, but I'm glad we reviewed all those all those parameters.
If if you have other questions, there's the applicants here, Mr. Dave Henifer representing the property owners, and we have Aaron Wade from Gilmore Bell, attorney that's been advising us on on this process. So if you do have any detailed questions.
Does or from those two groups, is what Vaughn said sound right? Like, I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page.
No, it's weird.
Yeah, okay.
The coun- Councilman Cardon doesn't believe his city attorney.
No, that's not, that's not what I said. Don't let the record show that.
I I should have, I neglected that that that.
I should have introduced that, I apologize.
If if either of you would like to come up as applicants and and consultant on this, please, please feel free to if there's anything you think you need to add. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Vaughn.
If, sorry, Mayor, hate to cut you off. If a resident or somebody in the area, and Chris, maybe this is for you, if somebody wanted to see what is the city's transportation master plan as far as roads in the area, where would they go to see what we've got planned out? And what does that plan give timelines as far as how far into the future we expect our transportation plan to to go?
So the the transportation master plan is is on our website under Streets and Transportation Planning. If you go to Streets, there's a thumbnail that says Transportation Planning. You can go in there. It's very interactive. It's really nice. You can zoom in. You can look at uh look at a lot of different factors. We do not give timelines because it's all growth dependent and it's it's too hard to guess where the houses or the businesses are going to go. The city typically does not build roads. If if we built roads, your taxes would triple or they're probably 10 times. They're they're just too expensive to build. They're built by developers kind of in this process or just a little bit at a time.
So with the applicants here, do either of you at this point in time know with the property that that we're looking at putting the PID in, do you have any highway plans or road plans at this point to show or share with the public?
We don't, and we don't think we have a practical tool of eminent domain ourselves. We we only have rights on the pro- our own property.
Kefor. Mr. Henifer, right?
Yeah, Dave Henifer. We we believe we only have rights on our property. We think that there are other restrictions on any exercise of eminent domain by us. We believe we can't do anything on that property that you don't approve before or after PID. And for the last two years, we've been designing with your city staff every gutter, every street, every light pole, and we we have to submit to their requirements to get a building permit, to get permission to proceed. So we have no plans to do anything other than the plans that the city we've submitted to the city and any changes that we want to make to those, we believe we have to come back and go through the same process we did again. And I'm just not aware of the PIDs granting to the landowner through a district any any additional rights other than absolute total compliance working through the city. If we thought we did, we would have loved it. It would have saved us a lot of time and money. We 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 our advice, all the council advises us is that we're subject to the same building permits, requirements, direction that the city gives to everybody else, that we don't have the right to exceed that. That that 161 acres is completely planned out and and along the way, if there are adjustments, we have to come back to you, PID or no no PID, to get approval for the plan. If we wanted to move the road, there's a road that cuts that in half, gives access. If we wanted to move that 30 feet or 10 feet, I I I'm I'm sure we have to come back, approach you, get a permit and meet standards. So been at this for some time, I I was never aware that we had any rights to exceed that.
Thank you, Ms. Henifer.
So as far as this PID and what we're approving tonight or voting on tonight, we have no plans or ideas as far as infrastructure specifically for this PID, highways, sewers, roads, electrical? Does anybody have an answer to that?
No, I'm I'm sure there's quite a few plans for it, yes.
There are infrastructure needs, no doubt.
Okay, sorry, it's public hearings been closed on this.
Ask, we've been told different things. There's property owners here have been approached by the Ritchie group.
We'll 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 get you, yeah, we can discuss it after the after the meeting.
After it's approved?
We can, we can discuss that after the meeting. Public hearing's been closed, but we'll discover it after that, discuss discuss it.
Chris, do we know of any major highways in our master plan currently that go west of the airport?
There's a a series of collector and arterial roads spaced beyond there in the master plan, is that?
Have have we started reaching out to property owners to purchase any land to put any roads west of the airport?
Yes, yes, we have.
Okay. Do you know of any, can you show us at this point any locations of where those roads will be?
Uh, so.
Oh, sorry, go ahead, Chris.
No, I think Tyler would be better to answer that. I I don't actually sit in those meetings. Tyler and Dave Anderson and.
Do we do we not have that because we're we're negotiating still?
So if you look at the agenda, there's an item on there under New Business that we'll talk about a little bit later for some properties that we've acquired where we would put roads and also have easements so that we could put power lines up or bring power, not power lines, but bring power.
And at that point, we can show on the map.
Yeah, it's a little bit west of the yellow area that you see up there. I've got some images that I'm happy to happy to pull up. If you need them now, we can.
Now, we we can bring it up if in New Business when we talk about it. I'm just wanting to see, I've had some property owners approach me as well with some questions, so I'm trying to get my bearings as to where they're talking about and where where we're looking to make sure that we actually align and what what they're telling me is accurate.
Gotcha.
And where we get to, I think that's, I think it's a great point, Councilman Euler, of of bringing up the the residents and trying to bring them along with this because these are things that that we've seen, you know, different steps of. But but as far as residents go, they might be catching this meeting or the meeting before or one after, right? So I I appreciate you being detailed on kind of bringing it along. I do know, you know, if people would like, you you know, areas like this, especially all over Utah County, going to Mountain Land Association of Governments page and seeing master plans of arterial roads and connector roads that that deal with freeways and highways and intersect communities where cities aren't grown out to yet, do start to draw some fuzzy lines. I call them fuzzy lines simply because.
Properties not been purchased.
That's correct, that's correct. And when it comes down to to those contracts to to purchase property, just like what's on the agenda tonight, it's after negotiation's been done and 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 we settle that up. So so it's not costing the taxpayer three and four times what the value of the property is because people, you see the road there, that's where they that's where they're going to come buy it from me, right? So so what's enough? So I I in the spirit of of kind of bringing the the public along here, this area, if Shane was here, would make a dumb joke about it, to zoom out and show everybody where this is. But but we all know that this is south of 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 our airport, out out west of 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 city. And and in a in an area that has has now had a, you know, quite the process of getting to the point it is today. And having said that, it it wasn't, it wasn't purposeful, but on Saturday of this week, this last week, and then on Monday of this week, I took drives to places that maybe I usually don't pay attention to. And and one of them was on Geneva Road in Orem, headed towards the golf course up there for a wedding reception. And as I got off, went from Provo to Orem on Geneva Road and looking, trying to safely drive while I'm looking, I just think how long utilities and roads have been out west of the freeway there. And it's been some time. It's been decades. And as I drove through that, there was still, here's a farm growing alfalfa. Here's a farm with a good field of corn. Here's a development. Here's a commercial development. Here's some high-density housing. Here's a temple. And and then all of a sudden, I was, you know, closer to a golf course. But passing a lot of different uses, the utilities and improvements have been out there for for a long, long time. And so when people, the the other one was was just off Springville's exit that's been there for a long time. There's been Walmart on one side and a beautiful field of corn forever on the other side. And my son asking, geez, whose is that? That's that's beautiful. And it's like, well, that's, you know, that's where we eat corn pretty soon this summer from, right? And so I think about those places, and in Utah, we're famous for them, where if somebody asks, what's this going to look like out there? There's going to be some, there's going to be some commercial and industrial spaces. And then it could be right next to a field, beautiful field of of corn or grain or wheat or or alfalfa for quite some time, and it just, it it could be that way because it's been that way in in other communities for quite some time. But but I think this step is the judicious way of the improvements getting done out there, not on the taxpayer, but on the on the the private companies that are taking, that are landowners and 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 looking at the opportunity for them to 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 expand and and do their economic, their economic thing, if you will. So, sorry, I hijacked a little bit of, but you you brought the public along a little bit better there. And hey, tell us more about what the public can expect out here.
Yeah, that's that's my main thing is to make sure that as the public watches, they they understand the process. We we've got meetings that we attend and whatnot. And so I feel like we just want to make sure those that live out there understand that if you don't want to develop your field, if you want to continue to farm, you will be able to do so. Concerns me a little bit having that ability of a PID to to use eminent domain. I shouldn't say concerns me a little bit, concerns me a lot, but it does help me knowing that we can put guardrails in place, that there's three groups that have to approve that. So having the ag ag committee on board along with county commission plus the city helps me feel that these individuals will be protected. They've got three sets of eyes watching out for them, so so that gives me comfort.
Thank you. Thanks for the the questions. Any other questions before someone tries to dictate a motion here on item A? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Since I have the, I guess, the wording in front of me, I'll tempt this.
Okay.
I move to approve a resolution of the City Council of Spanish Fork, Utah, providing for the creation of the GLH Public Infrastructure Districts One and Two as independent districts authorizing and approving a governing document, appointing boards of trustees, authorizing other documents in connection wherein with related matters, and adding a contingent with eminent domain that the district shall not exercise eminent domain or utilize any funds of the districts to support any eminent domain action or proceedings unless A, the public improvements for which the eminent domain is proposed are permitted under the govern- this governing document, an approval or an approval for the project or separate agreement of the city; and B, the location complies with the master plan's infrastructure plan or similar plan of the city or applicable service provider.
Motion made by Councilman Cardon.
Second.
Second by Councilman Took, a roll call vote here. Councilman Took.
Yes.
Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
Councilman Euler.
Yes.
And Councilman Cardon.
Yes.
Item A is approved. It takes us to nine A of New Business. This is the VERC Utah Inland Port Authority Loan Agreement Approval. Mr. Jordan Hales is the money guy that talks about money.
Yeah, so we're going to stay in that same area, the VERC industrial area. So this is a loan between Spanish Fork City and the Utah Inland Port Authority, their infrastructure bank. So this is a short-term, one-year loan, and we can repay it sooner if if we desire to. The reason we're borrowing this money is there's need for some infrastructure now that's been alluded to in this prior conversation. So we're going to borrow this money now, pay for that infrastructure, and then we will be reimbursed from the VERC industrial area. And then we will use that money that we're reimbursed to pay the loan back.
So do do the taxpayers of Spanish Fork front this money at all?
Uh, no. So this won't cost the taxpayers any because we'll be reimbursed not only for the full 10 million but also for the the interest that's accrued.
Thank you.
Yep. You can see the the terms there. Any questions?
Sorry, Jordan, I'll ask one more question.
Yeah.
If we weren't to do this, then it would come out of the general fund and it would be on us, right?
Yes, if we were to front it and then get reimbursed, we would be using taxpayer funds to front it.
This is a way to not, so like we've talked about, not having the VERC area be on the taxpayer.
This is one of those benefits that we get from the inland port, a financing tool that we wouldn't have otherwise.
Perfect, thank you, Jordan.
I appreciate you hitting on on that point. We've said it time before that the inland port is not something that you're going to see a sign of welcome to here. It is the financing tool of the area. And what you're seeing here is is one of the benefits of that financing tool. You get access to that state infrastructure bank to be able to to do this short-term financing. Any questions for the questions for Mr. Hales on this? If not, I would entertain a motion for item eight A.
I'll go ahead and move to approve the VERC UIPA loan agreement approval.
Second.
Motion made by Councilwoman Beck, seconded by Councilman Euler, roll call vote here. Councilman Cardon.
Yes.
Councilwoman Took.
Yes.
Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
And Councilman Euler.
Yes.
Eight A or excuse me, nine A is approved, takes us to nine B, resolution approving interlocal tax agreements with the Utah Inland Port Authority.
Mayor and council, with the creating resolution, you've created these two PIDs and they will then impose their mill levy, that additional property tax. The they happen to be also be in the overall large VERC industrial park project area, which will be generating tax differential. This agreement clarifies that the mill levy, the new mill levy that the PIDs impose will not be captured as tax increment or tax differential in the VERC industrial project area. Otherwise, we would defeat the purpose of the PID by diverting that that, you know, that property tax to the to the port project. That's the agreement. Any questions there?
I think one thing that's important, just to remind, as we're talking about, like, bringing everyone along with some of the process, is that the way that we've written our PID policy in the city is that the PIDs cannot, or that tax levy cannot be placed on any housing. So these are businesses, business owners that will receive this levy, and that has to be disclosed to them. So when whoever develops, sells that property, sells that land, that that entity has to be a business. It can't be housing. I think it's important.
Good, good point, great point. This is high-level financing that the business, and it's not a small business, would would know that their their mill is a little. would, would know that their, their mill is a little bit higher than the rest of the mill in, in the city. And, uh, and they know that going into it because it's, it's helping, uh, pay their own infrastructure costs back. So not a, uh, on a residential project. Thank you for that, Councilman Carden. Any other questions for Vaughn on this? If not, I'd entertain a motion on Nine B.
I would move, I move to approve the resolution approving the interlocal tax agreement with the Utah Inland Port, Port Authority.
Motion made by Councilman Euler.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Took. A roll call vote here. Councilman Euler.
Yes.
Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
Councilman Took.
Yes.
And Councilman Carden.
Yes.
Nine B is approved. Takes us to Nine C, the Springville Area Power Buyout Agreement. Mr. Christopher Thompson.
Could you bring up the last page of the agreement? Uh, what this is, is there's an area of Spanish Fork that's currently being served by Springville Power. Uh, it's in the area of the new inter- interchange with, uh, 2700 North, soon to be called Dry Creek Parkway, uh, with UDOT building that interchange. They are actually bu- helping to buy out some of the labor to, uh, make some changes to this power line. At the same time, we will be buying out, uh, the, uh, customers and the, um, the facilities, uh, of that and taking over those customers with Spanish Fork Power, which is now in the area. So.
So we're just doing a little switch.
Yeah, so it's actually pretty good for the city because normally we'd pay, uh, an extra fifteen to twenty thousand dollars. But with UDOT paying that, then, then we're able to accomplish this with, I mean, some UDOT participation.
Another public part of, uh, what I know a lot of residents are waiting for, as well as both of our cities, Springville and Spanish Fork, the 2700 North interchange. And this is a, this is another important step of getting that taken care of, is the power being aligned correctly.
So, just so you know, it's, it's this line right here.
And that, and that is northwest.
Oh.
Twenty-seven hundred north.
Yeah, so.
That flies over.
Be really nice if our borders were really nice and clean over there. Would be.
Yeah, right down here is the new interchange. And it'll go out to the airport on the west and then out to Springville on the east.
Buildings to the right have been demolished. They're no longer there.
Yeah, that's an older area.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Lot of changes happening there.
Lots of dirt.
Lots of dirt sitting, yeah.
Lot of dirt.
Yeah. Chris, and I think you've spoke to this before, but while we're here, the dirt sitting there, I think UDOT has told us, that does have to sit there for a bit to settle, since you're gonna be putting heavy, heavy traffic on dirt that is gonna have asphalt. They have it, they have to have it sit there for a time, right?
Yeah, especially with the interchanges where you're building big ramp structures and, and a lot of times what UDOT will do was, was, uh, load it up and then let that settle out in, in areas like this that, you know, have high water tables and, and there's a lot of issues, soil issues.
It's coming. Okay, if there's no other questions for Chris on Item C, uh, I would entertain a motion for Nine C.
I move to approve the Springville Area Power Buyout Agreement.
Motion made by Councilman Carden.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Euler. A roll call vote here. Councilman Carden.
Yes.
Councilman Took.
Yes.
Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
And Councilman Euler.
Yes.
Nine C is approved. Takes us to Nine D, the Fiscal Year 2024 Utility Bill Write-offs. Mr. Jordan Hales.
Yeah, this is something we do each year. And I actually called Vaughn and I was like, do we need to present this to council and have them approve this? I, I don't know. He, he was gonna do some research. But, um, I think it, it highlights some success that we've seen, um, in the finance department and the utility office collections. Um, so that blue line tracks how much we've written off each year. And there's a three-year delay from when we bill it to when we write it off. We do our due diligence, trying to make sure we have those that use the service pay for it. Otherwise, everyone else is paying for that service that was used and not paid for. Um, so that really low number right there is the year that we're actually writing off. Um, yeah, and if you scroll up a little bit, Nick, you'll see, uh, what that's made up of, that twenty-eight thousand dollars. It's twenty-four thousand dollars in, uh, things that are, accounts that were more than three years old. And then bankruptcy accounts, small balance accounts, and deceased accounts, um, make up the, a few thousand dollars there. Um, just for, uh, a relativity, um, we bill over fifty million dollars a year, a year in utilities. So thirty thousand dollars, um, it's a very small amount. Um, credit our, our policies and, uh, our, our, our residents and our, our workforce that does a good job of collecting. Um, we always say that when the, the bill goes unpaid, nobody wins. The city doesn't get paid. And the person that can't pay their bill, they're not happy either, you know, because now they owe something that they've used and they're behind. And so nobody wins. So our goal is always to get paid in full and on time. Everyone's happy when that is able to happen. So, um, this is, this is a, a good outcome to have very little that we have to write off.
Jordan, how much of that collection accounts will end up coming in? Much of it or?
Um, at this point, three years out, probably not much. Um, we do still, the, our, we've turned those over to collection agencies and they'll continue to work them. Um, so there are times where we've written it off in our system and they've collected and there's no bill to apply against. And we'll have to go and re-add the bill in the system to have somewhere to apply it. Um, but at this point, it, it's pretty minimal. Yeah. Once you turn it over to a collection agency, it's about eighteen percent collection rate. It's not very great. Um, yeah.
Jordan, I've got two questions about your chart.
Yeah.
Nick, if you mind scrolling down on the chart. First question is, why on earth do you go right to left on your chart? And I think we talked about that last year.
To our city treasure and straighten her from left to right. Yeah. Explain it to somebody else. You're not the only one to mention that to me today.
Second, second question, why are we projecting an uptick? I know it's not a lot, but what?
Um, we, these accounts are, so the accounts we're writing off today are those that were terminated in twenty, uh, twenty-one. Um, so we already know, um, accounts that have already terminated in twenty-two, twenty-three.
So next two-year projections.
Have an idea of where we're headed. And that, that red line is the highest it would be unless we have bankruptcies and, um, but those amounts won't go up because they're not incurring any greater balances. So we, we know where we're kinda headed. And hopefully we can get those numbers down a little bit. But we know they're, they're pretty low relatively speaking as well. So things are working well. We have a, a policy that when somebody signs in for utilities, they either have to pay a, a deposit or they sign up for ACH auto pay. About ninety percent of people say, I'll just sign up for an ACH auto pay. And it comes right out of their bank account and, uh, they don't get behind. We, we're not bugging them, turning off power or anything. So it's worked well for, for everyone involved. Like we say, we don't wanna turn anyone off. No one wants to be turned off. So. It's a good outcome when people can pay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Pass along to your department there, uh, that it's not lost on us, uh, or the residents that have reached out to us. They, they do take care.
They do good work.
They do good work. They, they are human.
That is true.
Human to people when they need to be human. And so.
Yeah, if, if anyone's struggling, pick up the phone and call us. We're, we're gonna work with you. We're gonna do what we can to work with you. Um, and we have different resources that, there's some people that, um, there's some programs that can help. Um, so if you're struggling, pick up that phone. You can even text us. If you're scared to talk to a person, text us. And, and we'll put you in touch with some resources. Um, yeah.
Well, thank you to you. Thank you to your department. Those, those, uh, those women down there.
Yeah, they do.
Fantastic job.
They do.
Thanks, Jordan.
Okay, uh, if there's no other questions for Jordan on that, I'd entertain a motion to approve, uh, Item D.
I move to approve the Fiscal Year 2024 Utility Bill Write-offs.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Took, seconded by Councilwoman Beck. This is a roll call vote. Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
Councilman Took.
Yes.
Councilman Carden.
Yes.
And Councilman Euler.
Yes.
Item D is approved. Takes us to Item E under New Business. We're back in the VERC area, I think. Tyler, is that correct?
We are. And Dave, uh, Dave Henifer didn't have to stay till 1:00 AM this time, so. Um, the Ritchie Group, uh, which Dave is, is part of, uh, they have been the ones that have taken the lead on acquiring property, uh, for future roads and power lines in, uh, the VERC area for us. And so the contracts that you see on the agenda tonight, uh, are contracts that, uh, they've negotiated and are now, uh, now we're, uh, we've got them on our agenda to suggest that we, um, uh, take over those contracts. So just to give you an idea of where this area is, uh, Councilman Euler, earlier you asked about, um, where in this area the roads would be. I'll show you a better picture here in just a second. This is an aerial view, so you can kinda get your, get oriented as to where we're, where we're at. So here's Main Street.
The Shane View.
The Shane, yeah, the Shane View. Uh, here's our airport runway. Uh, and then I'll go to the next slide, which in just one second, that'll show you exactly where this is at. But, uh, if you come here to the very top, so this is about thirty-four hundred north. And then the road, oh man, I can't do a straight line with this. I'm sorry. It comes down to about what would be twenty-four hundred north in the city. This five thousand south is, uh, is the county address. But let me show you the next view. So a couple of council meetings ago, um, we had some contracts on the agenda that would be assigned to the city, uh, from the Ritchie Group for other, uh, agreements that had been made. So this brown, uh, area, green area, and then this first, uh, the southern, uh, blue area, we have already acquired these properties. Uh, those contracts were assigned to us. We've closed on those. The city now has right-of-way and easement in those areas. Uh, the, the two contracts that are on the agenda tonight are owned by, uh, Matt Shadle. And they are this orange section and this blue section to make this final connection on where a future road would be and, uh, the area where we would have future, uh, power easements for future power lines. Does that make sense? Is, any questions on where that's?
Is water running there too? You know?
If, if we, that does, that helps a lot. Thank you, Jordan. If we were to zoom out even further, do we, do we know where that road goes or connects further south? What, what's the destination? Are we trying to connect to the twenty-seven hundred north? The new, the new off-ramp that we're building? What's the end destination in our master plan for that road?
So it, it will be, uh, what's called State Route Seventy-Seven or Forest South in Springville. So it would, it would connect up, up to that road.
That's the north though, right?
Yeah.
What about the south?
Yeah.
Now, to the south, to the south, it would go, uh, eventually down to Tenth North so that you can go across there. Also, uh, it's.
Third west?
Nineteen hundred north.
I'll go sit over there and we'll pull up the map.
That, it's nineteen hundred north is the other connection.
It's twenty-seven hundred north, go right through the free, or the airport.
Twenty-seventh is just south of the, okay.
So you come at the bottom end of the airport and then you can turn left on Main Street and then hit change on the south side. And then on the north side, it will be State Route Seventy-Seven.
So, yeah, if you wanna just show kind of the direction of where that road will be.
Okay, so twenty-seven hundred north is right, I mean, nineteen hundred north is right here.
Okay.
And then you can turn and come up and come to the new interchange here. And then the other end of the road is just off this green, I think. No, it's right here. So right here. So this, this is twenty, this is SR Seventy-Seven or Forest South in Springville. And then it comes in right here.
And then goes down.
And then eventually it'll come all the way down to Tenth, which is right there.
Okay, that helps.
Orient you?
It does, yes. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Tyler. Any, uh, other questions for Tyler on these, uh, purchase contracts? If not, I would, uh, entertain, entertain a motion to approve the assignment of these real estate purchase contracts.
I'll go ahead and move to approve the assignment of real estate purchase contracts.
Second.
Do you need anything? Let's. Okay. Okay, motion made by Councilwoman Beck, seconded by Councilman Carden. A roll call vote here. Councilman Carden.
Yes.
Councilman Euler.
Yes.
Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
And Councilman Took.
Yes.
Item E is approved of New Business. Do we have, uh, anything to adjourn the closed session for? Do we get that taken?
No, we got, we got that taken care of before.
Nothing else that needs to come before the council tonight? I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Motion made by Councilman Carden.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Took. All in favor, say yes.
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 We're adjourned. Thank you all for coming. Thank you.
Thank you.